Good morning, welcome to the city council meeting. We'll get started, but before then, I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery is absent today. Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity of life, health, and strength. We ask that you would guide us in our decision-making, give us the wisdom and the knowledge to do what's best for our city, that your will will prevail. We thank you that you are working within us to do exceedingly abundantly above all that we ask or think. We thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for the unity that binds us together, the love that we have for our city. And we ask that you would just continue to bless us as a whole, Lord. God bless, continue to bless our mayor, our city council, and all of those who work for our city, those who live in our city, to make our city a better place. We ask this prayer in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Chair, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee work session and council meeting held on January 23rd. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of January 19th through the 25th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations. We have one of those today. I'd like to call up Derek Munnerd, and from Lee County, I believe, EMA Director.
Rita Smith.
Rita Smith. Ms. Rita, thank you for being here today. Welcome to Gadsden. Just make sure the green light's on the microphone there that we can hear you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing me the opportunity to brag a little bit about one of your own, which is something's one of my favorite things to do. I am a 20-year emergency manager. I've been the Director at Lee County, these 16 years that I've been employed with Lee County. Prior to that, I was in Monroe County, Alabama. For those of you who don't know where that is, it borders Baldwin and Mobile. Tickle a Mockingbird is one of their claim to fames in that county. So I came from my roots of a smaller county, and so it always gives me great pleasure to be able to come and recognize those in leadership in smaller counties. In our county, our population is about 186,000 during a regular weekday, but during Auburn football home game operations, we run anywhere from 275 to 350 when we play those folks across the state. And so it takes our team of eight, it takes the Department of Homeland Security to bring in dogs and things to do bomb detection, it takes people with trailers in case we have mass casualty incidents, and so we always open up that opportunity to other county directors to be able to come and assist us, learn from us. We learn from them. And Derek was so kind this year to be one of those that came, and I just want to tell you, y'all are in really good hands here, here in the city, in the county. He did an excellent job, professional job. We are looking forward to having him back next year if he will allow it. And I just want to say that, you know, what emergency management is and what the directors do is not just the weather, even though we've had our share of really cruddy weather the last couple of weeks. 12 degrees in Auburn is cold, and it was 12 degrees there for three nights. And I said, what is happening? And that's for the North Alabama folks, but it was very cold. And so preparedness is a 24/7, 365 responsibility, and that burden is taken very serious by the professionals that are emergency managers. And so I just wanted a chance, an opportunity, to thank him in public and thank y'all for hiring someone that has such professionalism and that did such an excellent job for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Rita, for being here.
We'll take a little photo for you.
Thank you.
All right, Derek, do you'd like to say anything?
I just wanted to thank the mayor's staff, the mayor and the city council, again, not only for this opportunity, but all the opportunities that we've been given as the EMA. You know, it's not every day, you may not see us every day, and nine times out of 10, that's a good thing. But just know that we're always there and we're always ready. Thank you, guys.
All right. Well, thank you.
Derek, just one thing, I don't want to shed any sort of a dark cloud on this, but when you first took over, I made it clear to you that our policy here in Gadsden was that there were no tornadoes and there was no rain allowed on Fridays and Saturdays. And the last few weeks, you've missed the mark on that.
I'm going to blame the National Weather Service.
Okay, yeah, well, run it up the flagpole, whatever you got to do, but no rain on Fridays and Saturdays.
I got you, sir. Thank you, guys.
Good idea. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. All right, the next item in item seven, agenda item seven is recognition. As y'all know, we've been inviting various components of our high school and our local education system, and today, we're very honored to have the Gadsden City High School Titan Ladies Softball Team. And I want to call them up first. Coach Brackett, we'll let ladies go first. So our coach, if you'll come join us, and up here at the podium, Jesse, Coach Jesse Coach, welcome, and welcome to some of your players. Thank y'all for coming this morning.
Thank you for having us today. My name is Coach Jesse Nunley. I have been the assistant coach at Gadsden City High School. This will be my third year there, and in August, I was named to be the head coach. We are excited for what this season has to bring, and last season, we had the pleasure of enjoying the brand-new facilities of our turf field and a new locker room and all the good things that come with that. So what that really did for us as a team is it limited, or it made it almost unlimited as how many days we could get on the field. The rainout days, they were diminished, and ultimately, if it wasn't raining at practice time, we were able to be on the field. So it did a lot for our program, and we are very, very grateful for that. Moving forward, this season is our first season to expand and add a middle school team onto our program. And a lot of that has came from, over the summer, some of the other coaches and myself worked really hard on reaching down to the lower age groups and getting girls softball in the world, to spread the word about that, and getting girls on teams and playing together. So we've now, we now have at least one 12U team that has been playing together for three seasons now. Summer, fall, and they're rolling over into the spring now. So we are excited to see softball going younger and it growing, and these girls have worked so hard standing behind me. They are the oldest that we have on our teams. We have no seniors this year. So these are six of my juniors. So I know it would mean a lot to them if you guys would come out and show some support at some of our home games and come see the new facilities as well. I do believe that one of them would like to speak, so I'll let her close us out.
My name is Anna Kate Fells. I'm a junior at Gadsden City. I play outfield, and we would just love to have y'all come out and support us.
All right. Thank you so much. Well, y'all are at, Michael, did you get pictures, everything? Sorry, the mayor's not here today. He's traveling, I think, but y'all are great. Thank you for what you do. Thank you so much. Then next will be, I'd like to call up Coach Scott Brackett. He's our boys' baseball coach. I've known Scott Brackett, I guess, almost all your life. It's just good to see you in here, Coach.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Scott Brackett. I'm the head baseball coach at Gadsden City. I won't be long because they say I talk a long time, but born and raised here. We are very appreciative of what you guys are doing now, honoring and exposing our high school. I'll just be honest with you, that's something we've never had from the city aspect of it, and it's been a breath of fresh air, not only for me and the faculty at Gadsden City, but these guys, these young ladies. We're finally, you know, old-school City of Champions, we're trying to get that back with our school system, and I think we've got the leadership that we need. You guys are unbelievable. Mayor Ford, it's unbelievable. And like Jesse said, we do have that new facility. It is unbelievable. It does cut down on rainouts. It does allow us to get on the field a lot more than we normally would. These guys benefit from it. But we have games. You guys get in our games free. I don't charge our students at the high school. I want as many students in that stadium as we can get, so I don't charge our students to come to our home games. And that's really helped our participation with students showing up at games. We want energy. We want as much energy in our stadiums as we can get, so we don't charge them to come to our games. I know these guys like it. I brought Alex Swafford, he's a junior outfielder pitcher for us, Gabriel Burrito, that is a stud first baseman, was a pitcher, can't pitch because he had arm surgery, and then Matthew Sparks, which is our shortstop and pitcher, too. These guys also play multiple sports. They all three played on our football team. I love baseball players that play football. I know football's not for everybody, but I do encourage a lot of our baseball guys to play football. When it comes down to a college coach looking at these, and there are college guys looking at these three guys, but when they find out they play football, they will sign a baseball football player before they'll ever sign a baseball-only guy if they're of equal talent. They'll always sign that multi-sport guy because of the competitive nature of them. Okay? But I, again, love what y'all are doing. We greatly appreciate it.
We appreciate y'all, and, you know, it was brought up a minute ago that the new field and the complex, if you haven't been to Gadsden City High School and to see the new baseball and softball complex, which is adjacent to the football field, it is really something special to see. It makes you real proud to be from Gadsden, and I'm glad that students have that opportunity. I know our ladies athletic director, Coach Amanda Lewis, is here today, and thank you for coming, Amanda. We appreciate your support, and it's just, it's kind of a new day, and I know with the coaches in place, community support, we're going to see great things come out of the two programs. I do have a question. Is it Alex Swafford?
Yes, sir.
Are you as fast as your father?
No.
I am.
You are? Right. I can answer that one, no. He's close, but he can't run like that.
Alex's dad is Andy Swafford, and he was quite the athlete at Gadsden High School back in the day, was really fast. I mean, played football at Auburn, then played it, finished at Troy, was a wide receiver, played soccer, man, he could fly. But I hear good things about you. I know your family, know the Sparks, and the gentleman in the middle, what position, were you the kicker?
Yeah, Sam.
Yeah. I was the kicker a long, long time ago. When I had hair about like yours, I was the kicker. So that's, I thought that's who you were. So, I mean, you've got a great leg. Way to go. Don't hurt your leg. That's good. But we're proud of you guys. You got a...
Yeah, Coach, I just want to say two things. Number one, hopefully that sound system out there helps add to the environment. We were happy to help with that.
We play it all the time.
That's awesome.
Oh, good.
Also, the other thing is, my hat from last year is officially worn out. You'd think I'd played a whole baseball season in it, so I'm going to come get a new one.
I just got some new ones in, come by and see me.
All right. Thanks, Coach.
Thank you, guys.
Thank y'all. Thanks for being here. All right. Okay, that winds up our proclamations and commendations. We appreciate our students being here today. We really have a short agenda. Basically, item eight is unfinished business. It's an ordinance amending fiscal year 2024 budget. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It transfers $1,000 from the mayor's discretionary into the Contract Services account to fund employment of a senior aid worker in the city clerk's office through a partnership with the East Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item nine is new business. We have none today. Item 10, department reports, committees, boards. I believe we have a few. Do I see one back there? Come on up. This is our...
Good morning.
Good morning.
I didn't know I was going to follow up my best friend, Scott Brackett.
There you go.
I won't talk as long as him, I promise. I'm Steve Partridge. I'm the Transportation Director. I'll just tell you a little bit about what we do. Most of y'all are familiar with a lot of what we do. We're actually multifaceted, and there's two, I divided up into two main areas. We serve the citizens with the fixed route system, which is your trolleys, and also paratransit, complimentary paratransit, which is your DART system. I won't go into great detail about that. If any of you needs to know anymore about that that you don't already know, you're welcome to call me, come by and see me. Our employees, our drivers and our dispatchers probably have more direct contact with our citizens than most any department. I'm sure, I know police and fire obviously do, but we are in contact with them all day, every day, six days a week. So our employees are very important to what we're trying to do. The other thing we do in our department is we are the NPO, or Metropolitan Planning Organization Coordinator for the county and the city of Gadsden, and we work with the other metropolitan areas, other municipalities, I'm sorry, and also the county and ALDOT in overseeing road and bridge projects. Most everything that happens goes through us. Heath does a lot in those committees, and also, he does a lot, as y'all know, within the city that's not really part of the NPO, but he's got his hands in it as well. And then, I think, finally, I want to thank the council here because the things I just mentioned, we could not do any of that without your support. And y'all have been very supportive of us in the past. I've been on the job for two and a half years, and I've never seen anything but support. I was looking at the plaque inside of our building. We're over at 2000A West Megan, which is the Alabama City Center, the old General Forest Middle School. I was looking at the plaque that was put in when Transportation moved there in 2019, which was before my time, but I noticed that Councilman Wilson and Councilman Back are the only two people that are on that plaque that are still here. So appreciate you guys, and I appreciate the rest of you as well. As a citizen, not just as your Transportation Director, but as a citizen, I've been very excited to see everything y'all are doing and what the mayor's office is doing. I've lived here for over 50 years, and I've never seen as much enthusiasm or positive momentum as I see now. So if you ever need anything from me, just let me know.
Well, thanks, Steve. I was going to commend y'all for having, I think I remember some community input meetings where you're hearing from the people that are actually using the transit system of how we can better serve them with our routes.
Yes.
Of how we can do that. So I appreciate you listening to the citizens as opposed to just coming up with the routes that you think will work. You know, I think it's nice that we let the citizens have an input. We may not can always meet. I know we probably have certain limitations. We only have so many drivers, so many buses, but I appreciate your department being open to having those kind of meetings to have that transparency.
Thank you. We've got more coming up, so y'all will see more on that later.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Lee Roberts from the Legal Department. Good morning.
Good morning. The mayor wanted me to induce myself to y'all. I'm Lee Roberts. I'm the city attorney. But one thing about our department, most of you might not know, is that we are responsible for prosecuting in city court. And in my department, we have contracted with a lawyer, Kristy Owens, and she serves as our city prosecutor. And we also have Angie Pierce, who is a city employee, who works with the prosecutor, and they can't be here today because they're in court. And a neat thing about Angie is her husband is a retired police officer, and she is responsible, and she does a very good job at this, is she is the liaison with victims in our city, victims of crime. Of course, they have a lot of, they need a shelter to cry on, someone to talk to, and someone to be their advocate, and Angie serves that purpose, and she does it really well. Before Angie was there, I got the calls from the victims, and I don't anymore. They love her. The police officers, she arranges with the police officers to, with their schedules to get them in court so they don't have to spend time sitting around. They come in and testify if they have to and hit the road, get back on the road. She does a very good job at that, and I'm really proud of her. And then, in the office with me, if y'all know, Aaron Patterson. And I've got a new employee, Amber Pentecost, and since the mayor took office, he was a little concerned about how quickly things got out of my office, so he hired some help. And Amber has been with us for about a couple of weeks now. She is a longtime legal secretary in this community, and she knows her way around the courtroom, and she knows her way around law, and as every good lawyer will say, that their practice is success by the secretaries and the paralegals that work with them, because they handle all the work. As far as what we do in the Legal Department, we draft the legislation. So every resolution, ordinance that comes for y'all, we draft it. We handle employee matters. You know, sometimes, we are a huge employer here in the city, and unfortunately, sometimes there's disputes. And when there are, we get involved and we handle it. We handle claims and litigation. Now, of course, we have insurance, and we have some outside lawyers, their insurance company will handle the major claims, but in-house, we handle the small claims, the small litigation matters. And also, you know, between us three, we monitor the matters, the bigger matters that are in litigation, and I will attend trial or I will attend mediation, and we will then support and coordinate with different departments if needed for interviews or depositions. We advise the mayor on legal matters, and I advise y'all on legal matters, and also the city boards. And there's a lot of, we have a lot of municipal boards in this city, and whenever they have a legal problem or a legal concern, a question, it falls in our lap. We also draft contracts. If you know that every time, I mean, like, for example, Heath has a lot of consultants, and so Heath and I got down, and Heath did most of the work, but I tweaked it a little bit, but we've got a standard contract that he uses for all his consultants, and it's something that we're both comfortable with, and I don't have to review every time he signs a contract, thank goodness. And the same thing with, you know, with the other departments. You know, we have like, you know, a lot of bands coming in, so we formulated standard contracts that we do for the summer concert series and that type of thing, and have worked with the different departments on understanding the contracts and whatnot to fall for and don't change them and that type of thing. But everything we do is, there's a contract. And between us three, we're drafting a new contract or something from scratch every week, because there's always something new. And like, one contract doesn't fit all, but we do have some forms, thank goodness. Also, we do the real estate. When you get nuisance abatements, on your nuisance abatements, we have a title search that is done on these properties to make sure that we identify the right owners. We have a multi-layer check, cross-check, to make sure that we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's, because the one thing is, is we do not want to go in on the wrong property or not notify the correct owners in instances of nuisance abatement. So we do a title opinions, we do updated title opinions, we look at the tax rolls to make sure we identify everybody, and we search to find out, make sure we notify the potential mortgage holders, because the law requires that they are notified. So that's kind of a little bit of what we do, and I guess the last thing we do is whenever someone, you know, needs a fall guy with a constituent, we're usually the, I'm usually the guy. Any questions?
Am I have any questions for Attorney Roberts?
No.
Appreciate all your work.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah. It's good to put a face with a name.
You're a great guy.
Yeah. Are there any other department heads that are coming this morning? All right. Then item 11, we'll move to citizen requests. We have one today. It's Bill Avery. And Mr. Avery's going to speak about, he's going to thank the council and mayor for progress and announce some upcoming concerts. It's always good to have Bill in the house. Bill, thank you for all that you do to bring excitement and fun to Gadsden for all these years. Thank you.
First of all, I'd say I'd like to thank you, the mayor and the city council for giving me this opportunity to bring forth some events and stuff that I'm planning on for this summer. I have an event that's going to start this Friday. It's called the Red and White Gospel Ball. And a lot of people got misunderstood. They didn't know, have never heard of a red and white gospel ball. But this is the first time ever in the city that I'm doing this, and this is a gospel, BYOB, you can't bring alcohol. No alcohol beverage is allowed, but you can bring your own Bible. It's all right, you can bring your Bible. But anyway, I would like to invite y'all to check it out if y'all like to come. It's February, the 2nd, this Friday. I have four gospel groups, two local groups here, and myself, I'm performing myself. I have a new singer out on the gospel label by a recording contract. They wanted me to do a gospel song when I went to Dallas, so I recorded a gospel song, and I'm going to do a couple of songs there on the program. So like I said, another thing I would like to, you know, a lot of people don't want you to say the right thing, you know what I mean, but I'm going to say the right thing about the council and the mayor, you know, because I've been in the city a long time, you know, and I've seen a lot of mayors and seen a lot of city councils. I was here when there was commissions, you know, there wasn't no council, you know what I mean? And they always respected me, you know what I mean, for my music wise, for giving me proclamations, you know, all through the years. So I want to thank the mayor and the council for a wonderful job that y'all are doing. I know it's hard and it's rough, because you got a lot of people going backstabbing you, because the tongue don't have no backbone. So you just have to keep on doing what you're doing, and I'm going to keep on saying what I'm saying, because I got a new song out, and I'm going to leave the song, the name of the song is, "I Got the Right One Now." And now, we got the right mayor and the right council now. Thank y'all. God bless y'all.
Thank you, Bill. Really appreciate all that you've done, again, over the years. You've always been a bright spot, and we're proud of you for all the accolades that you've received over the years. Quite the entertainer. All right, we're going to go to remarks by the mayor and council. Make no remarks, okay? We'll start with, we'll let you go first, again.
Thank you. Two in a row.
Two in a row.
Doing something right.
Shaking up the equilibrium here.
Larry's texting me, wanting me to say a few things. Just joking, just joking. And Larry would be laughing, too.
That's right.
No, just looking, happy with what the future leads for Gadsden and the direction we're going, good pre-council and council today. And happy birthday to my partner, my neighbor here, Dixie Minatra, District 6. That'll be all. Thank you.
I would just like to thank Goodwin Mills and Kay Wood for that presentation. It's very exciting to see the potential for Gadsden and to be a part of it. And I know that we have a responsibility to serve, and it's an important one, and not something that we take for granted. So I appreciate what they've done and look forward to implementation. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes, Mr. President. I just, I don't have anything really to add, other than I do want to extend my condolences to Mayor Joe Taylor and the other residents of the city of Rainbow City on the passing of Mayor Sue Gladwell. She was the mayor years ago when I was growing up in high school and oversaw me washing several fire trucks on Saturdays as part of my public service over there a couple of times. So she was always a huge presence there, and I was very sad to see that she passed away this past weekend. So my condolences to Mayor Taylor and the entire council and administration there in Rainbow City. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Wilson, I don't know if you looked through that, there is a BMX track on that master plan. I don't know if you saw it.
I did see that, I did see that.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Hopefully y'all all saw what, what had to happen in order to get that picture in the presentation. I believe it when it gets, when the dirt starts moving.
Good morning, everybody. We have good cohesion up here as the council. Don't always agree, but we work well together. So thank God for Mayor Ford and his staff and his office and all the council. Just want to say congratulations to Derek and EMA on being recognized for his efforts. Also, it's always good to have Mr. Walter Lewis from Alabama, one of the legends of May. Look forward to having lunch with him the next time he's up here this way. And also to Mr. Bill Avery, we got a table already, those who can support him. Let's try to support our own here in our city as well as others when we can. And want to give a shout out to Mr. Fred Zachary for sponsoring a group of children to travel to Atlanta this past weekend. My wife made me promise to take her to see a world-renowned dancer, dance production, Mr. Evan Ily, and it happened to be in Atlanta. Mr. Zachary sponsored that trip, a tour bus full of kids. And so our church sent the groove, along with my wife and some others. So Mr. Zachary, I don't know how we gonna do it, because we don't agree on much, but I owe you a lunch. And I just wanted to personally tell you, thank you for looking out for the kids. All right, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Lathan?
Good morning to everyone. First of all, I want to, I got a text message while I was here, while we were here, about some cleanup that was going on in East Gadsden. And that is a result of Commissioner Washington, who had a group of people who were out today. Let me say thank you. It did not go unnoticed, even as it related to the residents in that area. So I just want to encourage District 1, that when you have people who are working like that, that, and I know we're doing much better, but it's a lot more that we can do, that we will take the initiative to report as well as to pick up where paper, where we need to, or trash where we need to. So I just wanted to say that to him. Happy birthday, Councilwoman Monatra. We, female power, I say it that way. On the city council, it's a pleasure, and congratulations on your birthday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lathan. Do want to echo happy birthday to our fellow council member. Happy birthday to you, and thank you for the cupcakes. I looked at Chris and Jason after I ate my cupcake and said, I didn't need that, but I needed that. So it's one of those good, good, bad things. Want to thank our, our students coming today, our baseball and softball players. And do try to go and attend the softball and the baseball game. I don't think you'll leave disappointed. It's a beautiful facility. We, we have great students, great players, fine coaches, and, and they, and they deserve our support. So I hope to see you out there at, at, at a game here in the very near future. We need to support our, all of our teams. I saw some interesting, real promising things on social media, on some Quizbo activity with our middle school. They continue to win and, and beat teams from all over the state. So congratulations to those folks as well. I'm gonna need some help with something here, so don't, don't let me get off, off, off base here. In our pre-council meeting, we had a request to suspend the rules and bring forth an item, and two of us said we weren't ready to bring that forward. There's been some new information come forward, so I want to bring that back up. I want to, I guess, suspend the rules and see if, if that can be brought back up again. So I guess I can make a motion to suspend the rules, to bring up Resolution Number 113 from the Legal Department. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Etowah County 911 Communications District. So I've got a motion. Is there a second?
One second.
Is that a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Smith made the second, but I wanted to ask a question.
Okay.
If, when it's in order.
All right. Well, I guess we vote now that we've had a motion and a second?
Would her question?
Or do we call for discussion?
Yes.
All right. You want to call for discussion at this point?
If it affects her vote for unanimous consent.
Yeah.
That would be at your discretion.
All right, let's just call for discussion. So what is your question?
I wanted to know if we're bringing that back up, if we can, if there would be an opportunity to discuss.
Yes. Yeah, we're gonna call John Moore to come up and, and we're gonna, we're gonna rehash it, if that's, if that's what we vote to do. All right, so there's been a, a motion and a second. So clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to immediately suspend the rules and immediately consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Okay, all right. John?
So I don't think it was some misinformation, or maybe I didn't present it right in pre-council, but it's not like we're asking for anything other than to give the mayor the power to negotiate with 911. They're supposed to be bringing back possibly a, a proposal on Friday. And so we're just asking that the, that the mayor's able to negotiate with 911. There's nothing in stone, there's nothing other than, it's just a chance for, for the mayor to be able to speak on behalf of the City of Gadsden and the citizens to say, hey, if they come back with an offer that we, that he can come back and counter on that, or he might just accept the whole thing. It's just, but he's asking for that power, I think is what it is. There's nothing, you know, shady about it.
All right. And I think my hesitancy with doing this was, you know, this was the first we heard of it.
Sure. And, and so this came back last week, was when they actually came in and had said something about bringing the proposal back. So we were kind of, you know, scrambling around trying to get that.
Right.
To get that.
But that, but what I was gonna say, this is the first that, that we had heard of it.
Sure.
And then we heard some other information that gave cause, pause for concern.
I understand.
And this is the part, you know, something like this probably should go to the committee, you know, the seven committees I, I reference every now and then.
Yes.
As opposed to coming straight to the council, suspend the rules, and then we vote on it. It's just, it's better government to do it in a, in a little bit slower fashion. Sometimes I know that can't happen because of how it's presented to, to you, but
Right.
Sometimes the tail's wagging the dog, and, and we don't need to, to do that. It puts us in an awkward position. We trust you guys, it's, that's not the issue. The issue is, we're voting on it, and we don't have all the information.
Right. I get it, I get it.
And so we hear information, and it makes us think, well, I need to research that.
Sure.
And so, and these are part-time jobs, so we're not up here from eight to five, you know, Monday through Friday, like the administration is. So we're at a disadvantage when it comes to doing that. I was up to 11:45 last night reading the 94 pages that Goodwin Mills presented to us this morning, you know, because I wanted to see what it was before I saw what it was.
Yeah, they did a great job.
I wanted to be better prepared to kind of digest the information. And that goes in for, for these things. So we, we have a process that's been in, in place since 1986. And so, and, and we've voted to use that process, and, and we need to, I'm, I'm asking y'all to use that process.
Yes.
And, and not to, not to put us in these positions where we have to do what we're doing today. I just don't think it.
And we apologize. I think it was just time-sensitive with the proposal coming back by Friday. So we were just wanting to make sure the, the mayor had the capacity to be able to negotiate with 911.
Well, you know, and to that point, I mean, he gets it Friday.
Right.
And then we meet again Tuesday. He can read it over the weekend, and then we can vote on it Tuesday. And that gives us time to find out the information.
Sure.
That we're gonna try to find out. And so, again, it seems like there's always, it's just, it's all pressing, and it has to happen. And we don't have the information. So we've talked about this for 16 months, and I'm, so now I'm publicly talking about it. You know, today, we, we put up a stop sign, and, but we've gone back and, and we've undone that, out of respect for the administration. But y'all've got to respect us, and y'all've got to get us that information in a more timely manner. It's just not fair to put us up. We have five new council members. Jason and I are serving a second term. We're not experts by any means. And so, and it's a part-time job. This guy's running a couple of restaurants, Chris running three or four restaurants. I mean, we're, you know, we're busy in our personal life, and so we just need a little consideration, okay?
Sure.
So we're giving you consideration, I think, all the time, and we're giving you special consideration today. And I don't, I don't hope it's not coming across as ad, as admonishment. I was gonna have this conversation private, but your text messages.
I understand. I listened, I sat in y'all's shoes before for 12 years, so I understand where you're at on that.
I'm not, you're interrupting me.
Yeah.
Okay? That's the third time. You're interrupting me. Let me, let me finish, and then, and it's your turn. That's the way it works, in Robert's Rules of Order. I have the floor. So give us the proper time to look at what you want us to look at. It's just not fair to put us in this situation. Sometimes it's just real, it's, you know, I know I'm probably making you mad, but I've been mad for 16 months off and on, because I'm not having time to do what I need to do to do proper work. And I'm looking at Brett, because I know Brett's got a lot to do, and he's the one that gives us this information, and it, and it works well. But we can do better, okay? That's just all I'm asking.
I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to know from Councilman Wilson, is your position still the same, or you have liberty to share any more information other than you shared with us earlier?
No, I just think, again, as a matter, as, as a matter of following Robert's Rules of Order, I have a family member directly involved in this, so I will abstain from a vote here. I, you know, I, my message earlier still applies, I think, with the clarification by Mr. Moore, that, that it's simply allowing the mayor to enter into negotiations, that's fine. I just think there's a lot of moving parts to this. And if we were not, having not seen this prior to this morning, I had some concerns that we were maybe jumping, getting out over our skis a little bit on what we were agreeing to. But if it's simply a matter of entering to negotiation or hearing a proposal, then, I mean, I, I'm fine with that. But as far as me personally, just as a matter of principle and following Robert's Rules, I do have a family, a direct family member who's directly involved in these negotiations. So I'll be abstaining from, from the vote on this. But I, I wouldn't want that to be misconstrued as a, a objection to it.
I just like documentation. I don't like anything to come back that we could have known about earlier.
Agreed.
And so I'm asking a question, but if there's nothing else, then we can proceed with it.
Okay.
Let me just say something before we do proceed. My asking was because I, maybe due to my ignorance or whatever, but I just wanted to make sure that when we dial 911, there would not be replic, you know, something that would, as a result of that. So having not known that it would be for immediate consideration, I didn't ask those, I didn't have a chance to ask that. So now, having done that and knowing where we are, that's, I just wanted to make, clarify, clarify myself there.
Right. Mayor, I think you were watching on TV. So I, would you like to have a comment?
No, I just walked in the door.
Oh, okay. Oh, I thought maybe you were.
Somebody want to brief me?
Well, we've, we've briefed enough, I think. We've, we're reconsidering the 911, and we're about to have a vote on it.
Okay.
So you can negotiate with the...
So, so there's already an ordinance, according to legal, in place, that they can't build a tower in Gadsden without the vote of the council and approval of the mayor. The point is, it's a simple point, that I think they get 2.1, 2.2 million dollars a year on 911. This changed in 1990. Lee, help me if I go down a picture.
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two. They are using our towers. We're about to have to sink about $500,000 in the Bellevue Tower. We don't have it budgeted. The only place it could come from is undesignated funds. Once again, Gadsden is paying for all the services throughout the county, especially the county. The 911 board, we have no representation from the City of Gadsden. I'd say 80% of their phones bounce off our towers. So it's a simple thing of Gadsden is now paying once again for everybody else's service. I'm just trying to get some of our monies back to Gadsden and back to the City of Gadsden for us to be able to maintain our towers and continue to work together in a team effort.
One of the questions that I have is, you're in Etowah County and you dial 911. If, if, if we get into a silo and we're doing our own program, do we not, how do we communicate with other police departments and other fire departments? Should, wouldn't it be better if we had one central office to handle 911? That, that would be seamless and...
So, so what you're referring to is doing away with our dispatchers and putting them with 911? That would basically, like, let the county take over all dispatch?
What, what I'm, I'm not to that degree. I think I'm just saying that, you know, how do we, see, and this is part of the due diligence of, of getting this this morning and not having the ability to know all this stuff.
So the reason we had to do it this morning, or yesterday, we actually asked Legal to get it done yesterday. So we, they had to research it. There's some, a lot going on there. They're calling an emergency meeting.
They're supposed to have the proposal by Friday.
They're supposed to have us a proposal by Friday. So it all, you know, it's just the way things work sometimes. It just has to happen that way. Trust me. We've been, we've been dealing with this for two months with them. The problem with them is they only meet once every three months.
Yeah.
So that's why we had to hurry and get this done. We have to do maintenance on this tower this Friday. If we can't secure any money, there's no option other than to disconnect the county from Bellevue Tower. Now, at first, the sheriff said it wouldn't be that big of a deal, that they would be able to work together, and they don't really use Bellevue Tower. Then he called back and he said, no, we'd have to have an injunction. Had to get a judge to file an injunction, and y'all can't undo Bellevue Tower. Well, we gotta fix Bellevue Tower. So how are we gonna fix it if we don't have any money? And especially then, we gotta come back to the council to ask for undesignated funds. So then I had a meeting with 911, and they came to meet with us, Mr. Bill Broder and his assistant, and
Megan.
Who, who?
Megan.
Megan. And they were gonna ask us, they wanted to start charging us a radio usage fee. So I was kind of shell-shocked. I thought, well, I thought y'all were coming to offer us money. You know, I thought you were gonna offer us our 50% of the funds to come back to us. So, you know, we were paying them $7,000 a month for rent. The previous mayor and council, y'all agreed to do that. I stopped that. So we moved EMA back in to City Hall, which saved the taxpayers of Gadsden $7,000 a month rent. And they're down in the basement with dispatch. So back to your previous question on dispatch, I, you know, I have looked at the numbers about joining dispatch with their dispatch. They, I think we got word at one time, they couldn't handle all of our calls. And so we have raised our pay for dispatch. We're still short, I think, four dispatchers or maybe five. But we have grown. Our dispatch is doing an excellent job. It has its benefits to have our own dispatch. We have the, I, I mean, they're the best employers I've ever seen, especially during storms and, and everything that we put up with. So at this point in time, I don't, I don't have that desire to merge dispatch with the county. That was something they discussed about. But I, I like having our own dispatch. It helps. They have a piece of equipment when we move City Hall to Regis Bank. I'm not sure what it's called.
It's what, the sheriff's office?
Yeah, down in, huh?
It's called a switch.
A switch. I don't understand. But down in our dispatch, it's gonna take 50 to $75,000 to move it. Well, are we supposed to pay for that? You know, are they supposed to pay for that? You know? It's kind of, because we're not gonna be in this building come July. So, you know, there's just, it's, it's Gadsden's money, and it's been going to the county, and we're getting nothing out of it. And then they were asking us for a radio usage fee. So, you know, I was kind of flabbergasted by that. So, you know, I think it's only fair that we get 50% of the funds that's going from the state. The state only recognizes one 911 board. And so I don't know what happened back in 1992, but the City of Gadsden had it all. Well, then the county, I guess the legislative delegation formed a local bill and came up with a 911 board, and they forwarded the money to a county 911 board. Well, Gadsden doesn't have any representation. Gadsden doesn't have anything, get any money. So now, I think, I don't, I guess nobody's ever paid attention to it. I don't know. But there's a lot of money that comes back, and we're filling out grants trying to enhance our towers. And we have three towers. We have the three main towers for the whole county. So we're fine. Gadsden's fine. But we're maintaining all the other municipalities and all the other, the rest of the county bouncing off our tower, off Bellevue Tower. And we gotta maintain it at our expense.
And then we also have the Rock Springs Tower that we maintain as well.
Rock Springs, and there's a third one. But if you remember during the storm, Bellevue Tower went out, and we had to get a generator. Y'all remember that? I'm not sure how much that generator was.
Yeah.
But I had to come to y'all, and we got our taxpayers' dollars from undesignated funds and fixed that generator. Theoretically, we didn't need that tower back on for Gadsden PD and Gadsden Fire, but we needed that generator back on for the county. So...
And, and I, this is great information to have. It's just sometimes I wish we had it earlier, because it helps our decision-making process.
So I, I wish we'd had it too. Some things just don't, I mean, it's just government, you know?
Right.
And some things I hope, I hope you can trust us on, or trust Lee, not us per se. But we're just, we're just trying to do our best to get the Gadsden taxpayers back their money.
Well, I'd say, man, my question was, it wasn't about laying anybody off. It was, would it be better to have one system for 911 for the smallest landmass county in Alabama, which is our county? But, but I, but your, your answer is...
So we do only have one, yeah. So we only have 911. And then if we did merge dispatch, there wouldn't be any laying off. They would hopefully take our employees and still add more. But, but there's, they only recognize one 911 board. That's the problem. But we do all the work.
Well, and that's a problem.
Yeah.
You know, that is a problem.
So that's a state-level issue.
Right. That's, uh, well, I mean, we, I mean, there's just, you know, a lot of moving parts. I mean, I'm, I'm certainly for Gadsden... I mean, I'm, I'm certainly for Gaston. I'm president of City Council of Gaston, so I want Gaston to, to do well. I also want all of our neighbors to, to do well in, in the county. And I'm, you know, and, and we've been working well with all of our neighbors. So this is just one pretty important function, I think, of government is, when you call 911, most citizens probably don't really care what we're talking about. They just want to have either the ambulance, the fire department, or the police come to their place when they, when they call. And we're supposed to figure all this stuff out, which is what we're doing now. So, and I understand what you're saying, Mayor. I mean, I, you know, we consistently seem to pay for a lot of things in Edgewall County, and we pay 100% for it. I think there's a long list of, of things like that. So there does need to be some, some equidity there where people are, we're all pitching in and pulling the wagon in the same direction, and it sounds like this could be one of those areas. It's just hard for us to know until we have this kind of information. I think we all had, there were three of us that, you know, had, had some, had some questions, and, and I appreciate you coming in to kind of up, update us on that.
And I'll be honest, whether I get the resolution or not, I'm still going to negotiate it.
Well, that's what I was thinking. You can negotiate that anyway. I mean, you know.
It's, it's the principle of the point of that the council's back in the mayor's office saying, we want to go get Gaston's money.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the point of the resolution.
Right. And when we, soon as we get all that information, then we can vote accordingly.
Right.
So, I mean, that's just, it's just hard to, and I think, I said earlier, I mean, we do trust you, and we do trust the administration, but it's just, there was some other information that came forward that just created some pause. We didn't know that there was a Friday thing coming to you, like a, a document, and we didn't know that, you know, so see, that's just more information that we didn't know.
So that's, so that's on their part. I told them we had to have an answer by their last board meeting. They didn't give us an answer. So then Shane came to us, who's the CEO of their board, and said, will you give us 30 days? Then he came back and said, will you give me, I think it's 40 days, because I think somebody's on vacation.
He's at EDA, he's at EDS this week.
He's at EDS, and.
And it's not what I thought you said.
I thought you said something else, too.
He's an EDS. Can you say that real fast?
I missed that one, but okay. But, but so, I obliged them.
That's close.
But we have got to work on that tower, or we're going to penalize our Gaston PD and our Gaston Fire Department.
Right.
And, and like you, I'm for Gaston first, and everybody else comes right behind them.
That's, that's exactly right.
Amen.
All right, Councilman Wilson had a, he had a question.
Yeah, well, I just want to add, again, I've been uniquely exposed to this over the last 30 years of my life, sitting at the dinner table. This is not original content. This has been going on between city and the Edgewall County 911 Board for 30 years. It's, there's been times in my life when the administration of the, and I don't, I don't envy Mayor Ford's role in this. I mean, he walked into a hornet's nest here with the, this relationship has always been complicated. He's right. There, the state does only recognize one 911 board in most counties, and that's because most counties only have one 911 system. Edgewall County is one of the only counties in Alabama that has multiple 911 systems operating. And, you know, it's funny, when you talk about Edgewall County being the smallest landmass county in Alabama, but we have all these municipalities. We're so unique in our, in our makeup here, especially when it comes to government and administrative responsibilities. We have, what, 13 municipalities? We have three school systems. We have so much overlay here that these issues pop up a lot in Edgewall County. And we have, I've watched it go from Gaston's moving dispatch and everything over to the county, to Gaston won't even talk to 911 in Edgewall County, and they don't want to have anything to do with them, and to the point about EMA that the mayor inherited in this process. When they originally went to build the 911, brand-new, state-of-the-art 911 facility in Edgewall County, the city was encouraged to come in and be a part of that. And the city declined and said, we don't want to be a part of it. And so they changed the footprint and the floor plan of the entire 911 facility out there, and the size and scope of the equipment that they installed out there, because Gaston said they didn't want to have anything to do with it. They didn't want EMA to be a part of it. Well, then they built the building, and when I became city councilman five years ago, the mayor's administration at that time said, we're moving EMA out to 911, right after they had built the building and told them they didn't want to move EMA out there. Then we turned around and moved them out there. And then they had to go out there, and we spent a bunch of money to build them a new annex building onto the building that they had just built to house 911. And then as soon as the new administration in, we moved them all back, right after we had just built that building out there. So this has been going on for 30 years, this back and forth and back and forth. And I just, you know, I'm sure everybody's aware of this, but the very first 911 call ever in the United States of America was made in the state of Alabama. It was in Hartsell, Alabama, I think. That was when the very, I mean, 911 was literally invented in the state of Alabama. So we have a lot of history here, and there's a lot of complicated moving parts to it. When you talk about radios and new switches being installed, and who paid for those switches, and who paid for these switches, and who paid for that? I just want us to tread lightly, because I think, from what I've been told, again, sitting at the dinner table drinking my sweet tea when I was a kid, the 911 business is a money-losing business, and they are hemorrhaging cash all across the country in 911 programs. And I just want to be careful about what we take on more and more in, in our responsibilities around here. But I couldn't agree more that 911 needs to be paying Gaston for using Gaston services, no doubt about it, 100%.
So, Mr. President, I, I appreciate Jason, Councilman Wilson saying that. We are hemorrhaging. We're getting zero. And we're spending almost $800,000 to $900,000 a year on these towers.
Yep.
So, you know, it's a losing business for us, but it appears to be a making-money business for the county. And paying the county $7,000 of rent that I canceled was absurd. So that's why I saw to it, and I thought that was wise use of taxpayers' dollars.
And I agree with you on that. I think it was, too.
And, and that was one of the deals cut way back when. I don't know why, and I don't, I don't need to know why, but my job's to look after taxpayers'